Let us all try to be worthy of your windows and tonight.
Om Saravamam Nyalamangalaya Vareyamam Varadamsukam Om Namum Bhagavate Bhagavate Searavindaya Om Namum Bhagavate Searavindaya Bhagavate Searavindaya Om Saravamam Nyalamangalaya Vareyamam Varadamsukam Om Namum Bhagavate Searavindaya Om Namum Bhagavate Searavindaya Om Namum Bhagavate Searavindaya Om Namum Bhagavate Bhagavate Searavindaya Om Namum Bhagavate Searavindaya Bhagavate Searavindaya Om Saravamam Nyalamangalaya Vareyamam Varadamsukam Om Namum Bhagavate Searavindaya Om Namum Bhagavate Searavindaya Om Namum Bhagavate Searavindaya
Life Divine, परवतरकाहे नम्मनिवर्यम नैरतिल इंदा Google Meet रिणयतलतिन मोलम ओरिंगिनाइथु इंदा नल्ला वायपनी नमकारलियुब्ला भगवानकुम श्री अन्नेकुम नमदनर्यय्यम वणकत्ती औरगलद्दुपोर्पादंगली समर्पिप्पो इत्तरणतिल नम्मनरिर्जम ओवर एन्नत्यय्यम इंदे नाम पेसम ओवर वार्त्यय्यम औरगलक्कु कानिक्याहा समर्पिप्पो अनिवर्कम आले वणकम नाम लाइफ डिवाइनल सवाई कर्माइदोरम उदलिलिरंदे पार्थकोण्डवरिगिन्रो अदिल नाम तप्पोदु पार्थकोण्डरिप्पदु बुक वन चैप्टर फोर रियालिटी ओम्नी प्रेसेंट एनकिन्रा तलईपय तलईपय उड़या इंदा चैप्टरदान पार्थकोण्डरिकिन्रो इंदे तलईपय वंदे तलईपलय भगवान एन्ना इंदा चैप्टर मोरोदम कोरु कोरा वरिगिन्डार एन्नपदु नमकत्तेरिगिन्डु इंदा एंगुम निरैंदुल्ला अंदा मैयपोरु एंगुम निरैंदुल्लदु एदुवेन्राल अंदा मैयपोरुदान अदुदान इंदा चैप्टरनुड़य तलईपय एंगुम निरैंदुल्लदु एदुवेन्राल अदुदान मैयपोरु रियालिटी ओम्नी प्रेसेंट इदुदान अडिप्पड़े करतु इदु इल्लादे इडम्मे कड़यादु इंदा मैयपोरु ब्रह्मन इल्लादे इडम्मे इंदा प्रभंजतिल कड़यादु एंगुम निरैंदुल्लदु एंगुम याबितुल्लदु अनैत्तनुल्लुम उल्लदु इदुदान अडिप्पड़े करतु इरूंदालुम अंदा डिवाइन एन्नपदु ओन्रुदान एन्नपदय अनिवरम एठ्रकोल्किन्डनर अनाल अदुपुरितु पुरिंदुहुल्लुम्बोधुम सरी विळक्कुम्बोरुधुम सरी एन्ना कारणत्यनाल वंदे मुरणपाड़गल एयरपड़िकिन्डन वेव्वेर अमैप्पहल तोंडिकिन्डन ओरु सारारनुड़य कोर्टपाडु मत्रोर सारारनुड़य कोर्टपाडुडन मुरणपड़िकिन्डुदु वेयरपड़िकिन्डुदु इरूंदकुम ओरु इणक्कमाट्र नेलय एयरपड़िकिन्डुदु एदुरेदुरान नेलेगल एयरपड़िकिन्डन इरूंद कोर्टपाड़गल इरेवने कुरितुदान पेसेकिन्डन इरूंदालुम अवय इरूंदुम एदुरेदुरान नेलयली ओन्रुकु ओन्रु ओन्रु ओन्रुकु मत्रोन्डु एदुरान नेलयली सैल्बड़िकिन्डन इदु एन्ना कारणम अदुकु भगवान कोरकुडे कारणम एन्ना वन्राल इरेवने कुरितु नम्म पेसेकिन्रो वार्तेगल मोलमाहत्तान नाम ओन्रे कुरितु पेसेकिन्रो वार्तेगल इल्लामल नम्मल इंदय इरेवन कुरित विळक्कत्तय एन्दा वडिवलुम नम्मल विळिप्पड़त्त मुडिवल मुडिवतिल्ले आकोड़ियो वार्तेगल एन्रेमियादु एरिकिन्डन वार्तेगल अत्यावसीभाह एरिकिन्डन अनाल इदल एन्ना नाडिबरिगिन्डुदु वन्राल वार्तेगलिन मोलमाह अंदा उन्मयलय नम्मल एन्ना मुयन्रालुम विळिप्पड़त्त मुयला मुडियादु एन्नु भगवान कुरिप्पडिकिन्ड्रा एदु वंदु ओर अडिप्पड़यान अर्धयान उन्मययो अदय उयंद ओर उयंद आन्मयकन्बोत्तय वार्तेगलिन मोलम विळिप्पड़त्त मुडियादु अनाल नम्म मनम ओर कुरिया एल्लेक्कल सैल्बड़ुम मनम द वार्तेगलय नम्बित्तान एरिकिन्डु अदन कारणमाह वार्तेगलय मोलमाह वेव्वेर वार्तेगलय अदु तोठ्रवितु द इरेवनुड़य अंदा अम्सत्तय विळक्कम मुयलकिन्डु अवार विळक्कम्बोरुदु एन्ना सैकिन्डुदु वन्राल अंदा वार्तेगल ओर कुरिया अलेविलय ओर उन्मयय विळिप्पड़त्त मुयलकिन्डन आदरालदान द वार्तेगल ओन्रु ओन्रुडन ओन्रु मुरणपड़ एरिकिन्डन इरूंद इरूंद कोर्टपाड़गल ओरय विषयत्तय कुरितु तेरिवित्तालुम द वार्तेगलिनुड़य ओर कुरै कुरै ओर एल्लय ओर एल्ले कुटपट्ट तन्मय कारणमाह ओरय विष्यम एदुरुम पुदिरुमाह कानपड़िकिन्डु उदारनत्यरक इंदा बीइंग अन नॉन बीइंग इरेवनुड़य एंगुम एरक्कपुड़य अंदा इर्पय बीइंग एन्नु कुरिकिन्रो इल्लाद नेलयय नॉन बीइंग एन्नु कुरिकिन्रो इदु ओर भगवान एन्ना कुरिकिन्डर द नॉन बीइंग एन्नु कुरुवदु ओर वार्तयदान अनाल इंदा बुद्धमदात कोर्टपाड़गलय एन्ना कुरिकिन्डारगल अन्द नॉन बीइंग एन्नु इरेवने कुरितु कुरिप्पड़ुम्बोरुदु अवरगल कुरुवदु एन्ना वन्राल एदुमय इल्ले शून्यम नॉन बीइंग अदुदान अदिलिरंदुदान अनित्तम वंददु अदिल अदिलदान अनित्तम मारय मारयिन्डुदु अहयाल इंदा इरेवन इंदा ब्रह्मन एनकिन रमैपय इल्ले एन्नु अवरगल कुरिकिन्डारगल अवरगल कुरुवदरकाहे कुरुवदरकाहे कयालप्पड़ुम कुवार्तय एन्ना वन्राल इंदा नॉन बीइंग अनाल इंदा नॉन बीइंग एन्नपदु ओर वार्तयदान ओर वार्तेगलिन मोलमाह ओर उन्मयय विळिप्पड़त्त मुडियादु एन्नु भगवान कुरिप्पडिकिन्ड्रा वार्तेगलय वार्तेगल अदय उब्योहिक्कुम ओर एल्ले कुटपट्ट मनम इदन कारणमाहत्तान मुरणपाड़गलय नाम तोठ्रविकिन्रो एन्नु भगवान कुरिप्पडिकिन्डर इंदा इंदे नॉन बीइंग अदावु असत एन्नु कुरिप्पड़ुदु उन्मयलय एदुवेन्राल नाम द इरेवन इंदे मैयपोरु कुरित नम्रोडय अनुभवत्तय्यम एन्नत्यय्यम इरुदियाह ओर वार्तय वडिवत्तिल नाम ओर वडिवमित्तालुम कोड़े इदय एल्लाम तांडीरिप्पदुदान अंदा इरयमसम एन्नपदय कुरिकुम विदमाहत्तान इंदा नॉन बीइंग इंदा नथिंग एनकिन्रा वार्तेगल उब्योहप्पड़त्त एन्नय उब्योहप्पड़त्त पड़िकिन्डनय उड़य अनित्तमय शून्यम एनकिन्रा अर्थत्तिल अवैगल उब्योहप्पड़त्त विल्ला उब्योहप्पड़त्त पड़ा विल्ले अनाल इंदा वार्तेगलिनुड़य ओर कुरैपट्ट ओर विळिप्पाट्टिन कारणमाह नॉन बीइंग नथिंग एन्न्राल शून्यम एन्नु तवराह पुरिंदुहुल्ला पड़िकिन्डुदु एन्नु भगवान कुरिप्पडिकिन्ड्रा उन्मयलय अंदा नॉन बीइंग अन नथिंग एदय कुरिप्पडिकिन्डुदु वन्राल नी नाम इन्नदान इंदा इरेवन कुरित विळक्कत्तय वार्तेगलिलो एन्नंगलिलो करतु ओरु ओरुवाक्कत्तिल वडित्तालुम कोड़े इदय एल्लाम तांडी एरक्कुड़यदु दान अंदा मैयपोरु एनकिन्रा उन्मयय तान इंदा नॉन बीइंग नथिंग एनकिन्रा वार्तेगल विळक्क किन्डनवय उड़य ओर ओन्रुमिल्लाद तन्मयय अवरगल अंदा वार्तय विळक्कविल्ले अहयाल वार्तेगलय मोलमाह ओन्रे विळक्कम मेलुम्बोरुदु नाम तवरान ओर विळक्कत्तय तरिकिन तरिकिन्रो तवरान तवरान पुरिदलय नाम एयरपड़त्तिकिन्रो मुरणपाड़गलय एयरपड़त्तिकिन्रो एन्नु भगवान कुरिप्पडिकिन्डर अदरकु उदारनमाहत्तान भगवान द नॉन बीइंग इंदा नथिंग बुद्धमदात कोर्टपाड़गलिल कानपड़मित्तय वार्तेगलय अवर मेयरकोल्काट्टिकिन्डर इदलाल उन्मयलय एल्लामय ब्रह्मन एंगुमय एरिकिन्डुदु अप्पर एरक्कुम्बो यवारुनाम अदय इल्लामल एरिकिन्ड्रा ओर पोरुल एन्नु कुरमुडियम अदय पोल इंदा बीइंग एन्नपदु सत एन्नपदु असत सत एन्नपदु भगवान एन्ना कुरिकिन्डर इव इरूंदमय समहालतिल ओन्रोड ओन्रु इर्प्पविदानय उड़य ओन्डिलिरंदु ओन्रु वंदवय कड़यादु नॉन बीइंगले इंदु बीइंग वंददु कड़यादु अहयाल मींडुम अंदा बीइंग अंदा सत एन्नपदु अंदा नॉन बीइंग अदरकुल मारिंदुविडुम एनकिन्रा कोर्टपाडुम तवरय एन्नु भगवान कुरिप्पडिकिन्डर इव इरूंदमय ओन्रय ओन्रय एठ्रकोन्रु सममाह इर्प्पविदानय उड़य ओन्डिलिरंदु मत्रोन्डु तोंडियवय कालत्तिर कुटपट्ट पुर अम्संगल कड़यादु तोंडियवय कड़यादु इव इरूंदमय सास्वदमान अम्संगल एन्नु भगवान कुरिप्पडिकिन्डर अहयाल इंदा नॉन बीइंग अदिलिरंदु बीइंग वंददु तिरुपय इंदा नॉन बीइंग अदरकुल अदु मारिंदुविडुम एनकिन्रा ओर करतुम तवरय एन्नु भगवान कुरिप्पडिकिन्डर एन्न्राल अंदा ब्रह्मन एन्नपदु इटरनल बीइंग सास्वदमाह एरक्कुड़य पोरु अदु वंदु तोंडिमारय कुड़य ओर अम्सम कड़यादु इंद इंद एल्लामय एन्ना कारणत्यनाल एयरपड़िकिन्डुदु वन्राल नाम वार्तेगलय नम्बित्तान एरिकिन्रो वार्तेगलिन मोलमाह ओन्रे विळिप्पड़त्त मेलुम्बोरुदु इत्तकय मुरणपाड़गलय नामय तोठ्रविकिन्रो एन्नु भगवान कुरिप्पडिकिन्डर मेलुम अव कुरुवदु एन्ना वन्राल इंदा इरेवने कुरितु नाम कुरुम्बोरुदु अदय नाम यवारु कुरिकिन्रो वन्राल अरियपड़ादुदु एन्नु कुरिकिन्रो द अन्नोबल एन्नु कुरिकिन्रो एन अवार कुरिकिन्रो वन्राल नम्रोडय नेलयुडन ओप्पड़ुम्बोरुदु अदु अदु ओर मिघ उयरत्तिल एरक्कुड़य ओन्नारमान उयरत्तिल एरक्कुड़य ओर अम्समाह अंदा इरेवनी नाम कानिकिन्रो वार्तेगलाल नम्मल विळक्कमुडियवतिल्ले आदलाल अदय अरियमुडियादुदु एन्नु कुरिकिन्रो अन्नोबल एन्नु कुरिकिन्रो एन्न्राल अन्नोबल एन्न्राल एत्तकय मनोरीदयान कोर्टपाड़गल कोर्टपाड़गलिनालुम अंदा अदय विळक्कमुडियादु मनम सम्मंदपट्ट एन्द ओरु कोर्टपाड़गलिनालुम विदिहल विदिहलिनालुम अदय विळक्कमुडियादु आदरालदान अदय अन्नोबल एन्नु कुरिकिन्रो अदय पोल इंदा प्योर बीइंग अंदा ब्रह्मन साइलेंट सेल्फ एन्नपदु एन्ना वन्राल इंदा एल्लाविदमान ओर विळक्कम इरेवन एल्लाविदमान विळक्कत्तय्यम कडंद एरक्कुम नेलयय अदु कुरिप्पडिकिन्डुदु इंदा प्योर बीइंग साइलेंट सेल्फ एन्नपदु एदय कुरिकिन्डुदु वन्राल इरेवन एल्लाविदमान विळक्कत्तय्यम कडंद एरक्कुम ओर अमैप्पाह एरिप्पदय तान अंदा प्योर बीइंग एन्नु कुरिप्पडिकिन्डु एन्नदाल अदु इरयम सत्तिनुडय पूर्ण सुदंदरत्तय अदु काटिकिन्डु अदु ओर इर्कुम अम्समाहुम एरिकिन्डुदु अदु इल्लाद ओन्राहुम एरिकिन्डुदु अदु अदनुडय पूर्ण सुदंदरत्तय काटिकिन्डुदु एन्नु भगवान कुरिप्पडिकिन्डर अहयाल इंदा नॉन बीइंग एन्नु कुरिनाल असत एन्नु कुरिनाल एन्ना अर्थम वन्राल अंदा डिवाइन उडय इट्स फ्रीडम फ्रॉम ऑल कॉस्मिक एक्जिस्टेंस इंदा प्रभंजतिल एरक्कुम अनैत्त इर्प्पुगलिलुम अंदा डिवाइन एरिकिन्डु अनाल अदु अनैत्तान अमैप्पहलिलुम तांडी इदर कप्पालुम एरिकिन्डु इदर कप्पालुम एरक्ककुड़यादु अदनुडय सुदंदरत्तय कुरिकुम सोल्दान इंदा नॉन बीइंग एन्नपदय उड़य बीइंग एन्नपदु एन्नपदुनुडय ओर एदर सोल अल्ले बीइंग अन नॉन बीइंग दे आर नॉट ओपोसिट्स एन्नु भगवान कुरिप्पडिकिन्डर इव इरूंदमय डिवाइन उडय ओर डिवाइन डिवाइन उडय इरुवेर नेलेगलय विळक्ककुड़य सर्कल दानित्त विर एदुरेदुरान सर्कल कड़यादु नाम सर्कलय नम्बी एरप्पदाल इत्तकय ओर मुरणान करतय इदु मुरणान ओर मुरणपाट्टय इंगिक कानिकिन्रो एन्नु भगवान कुरिप्पडिकिन्डर अदय पोल इंदा नॉन बीइंग एन्नपदु बीइंग एन्नपदु सत अन असत इदु इरूंदमय ओन्रय ओन्रु तर्वय इर्प्पवय आदर्वलिप्त इर्प्पवय दे आर कॉम्प्लिमेंट्री तू ईच अदर इव इरूंदम एदुरेदुरान अम्संगल कड़यादु मेलुम भगवान कुरिकिन्डर द बुद्धर वंदे निर्वाणत्तय निर्वाण द स्टेट ऑफ निर्वाणा अल्लादु मुक्तय अडैंदुविट्टार एन्नु नाम कुरिकिन्रो इरूंदालुम बुद्धर अंदा मुक्त अंदा लिबरेशन विदुदलय इदय अडैंदुविट्टार एन्नु नाम कुरिकिन्रो एठ्रकोल्किन्रो द स्टेट ऑफ निर्वाणा इदय अडैंदुविट्टार एन्नु नाम एठ्रकोल्किन्डुम इंदा करतय एठ्रकोल्किन्रो अप्परिवन्राल अवर इंदा उलघत्तिल यवारु ओर सक्तिमिहुंद ओर आल्मयली सैल्बड़मुडिन्दुदु एनकिन्रा केल्वय एड़िकिन्डु एन्ना कारण एन्ना कारणम वन्राल अवरुडय सैल्बाड़गल इंदा उलघत्तिल ओर मिघपरियय सक्तिवायिंद ताक्कत्तय एयरपड़त्तिय एयरपड़त्तिय अप्परिवन्राल बुद्धर अंदा लिबरेशन अनित्यम कडंद नेलय एट्टिविट्टार वन्राल यवारु अवराल इंदा उलघत्तिल ओर मिघपरियय ताक्कत्तय एयरपड़त्तमुडिन्दुदु एनकिन्रा केल्वय एड़िकिन्डु अदरकु भगवान इंगोर विळक्कत्तय तरिकिन्रा एन्नत्तरिकिन्डर वन्राल बुद्धर वंदे अवरुडय अह उनरुनेलय इन्नर कॉन्शियसनेस अंग वंदे ही वास इंपर्सनल इन इस इन्नर कॉन्शियसनेस इंपर्सनल वन्राल एन्द विदमान ओर तनीनाबर सार्बुडमय इल्लाद नेलय अंदा नेलयली अवरुडय अह उनरुनेलय इरंदु इरूंदालुम अवर बुद्धर वंदे ओर परिय पॉवरफुल पर्सनालिटी इंदा उलघत्तिल ओर मिघपरियय विलेगलय एयरपड़त्तुम ओर मिघचिरुंद मिघ सक्तिवायिंद आल्मय कोण्डवराह इरंदार इदय एदय कुरिप्पडिकिन्डुदु एन्नु भगवान कुरिप्पडिकिन्डुदु कुरिप्पडिकिन्डर वन्राल ओरुवर मुक्तय अडैंद पिन्नरुम ओर निर्वाण नेलय एट्टय पिन्नरुम अवराल इंदा वेली उलघत्तिल सैल्बड़मुडियम अहयाल ओरुवर अंदा लिबरेशन अदय एट्टुवोदुम इंदा उलघत्तिल सैल्बड़ोदुम इरूंदु ओरय समयत्तिल निघड़मुडियम एन्नु कार भगवान कुरिकिन्डर ओरुवर अंदा उयंद नेलय एट्टय पिन्नरुम इंदा उलघत्तिल मिघत्तिरम्बड़ सैल्बड़मुडियम अहयाल इंदा लिबरेशन एन्नपदु ओर सैल्बड़ुम नेलक्की एदुरान नेलय कड़यादु एन्नु भगवान कुरिप्पडिकिन्डर इरूंदम अंदा लिबरेशन द इन्नर लिबरेशन अंद आउटर एक्टिविटी इदु इरूंदमय पास्तम अप्परिना एदुरेदुरान नेलेगल कड़यादु एन्नु भगवान कुरिप्पडिकिन्डर इदलाल पार्कुप्पो भगवान एन्ना कुरिकिन्डर द वार्तेगलदान वंदे इंदा कोरप्पत्तय एयरपड़त्तिकिन्डन अप्परिंगर वार्तेगलिनुडय ओर पत्राकुरय ओर पोदाकुरय इदुदान इंदा कोरप्पत्तय एयरपड़त्तिकिन्डन एन्नु भगवान कुरिप्पडिकिन्डर उन्मयय तेरिविक्कुम्बोरुदु उन्मयय विळिप्पड़त्तुम्बोरुदु वार्तेगलिनुडय ओर पत्राकुरय इन्नेडिक्वेसी ऑफ वर्ड्स एन्नु कुरिप्पडिकिन्डर अदुदान इत्तकय ओर कोरप्पंगलय एयरपड़त्तिकिन्डुदु एन्नु भगवान कुरिप्पडिकिन्डर इदल एन्ना नाडिबरिगिन्डुदु वन्राल भगवान एन्ना कुरिकिन्डर द वार्तेगल वंदे आरेखुरयान ओन्रा आरेखुरया ओन्रे विळिप्पड़त्तिकिन्डन अवार विळिप्पड़त्तुम्बोरुदु एन्ना नाडिबरिगिन्डुदु वन्राल अदय विळिप्पड़त्तुम नबर तान विळिप्पड़त्तुदुदान सरी उन्मय एनकिन्रा ओर तीव्रमान ओर मुडिवल एरिकिन्डर इदय भगवान आंगिलत्तिल सेल्फ असर्टिव वायलेंस एन्नु भगवान कुरिप्पडिकिन्डर नान वंदे वार्तेगल उब्योहिक्किन्रे अदन मोलमाह ओर उन्मयय तेरियपड़त्तिकिन्रे वार्तेगलिन मोलमाह एन्नाल उन्मयय आरेखुरयाह तान तेरिविक्कमुडिकिन्डुदु मुरुमयाह तेरिविक्कमुडिवतिल्ले अवार इरक्कयल नान एन्नसिकिन्रे नान तेरिविक्कम उन्मयदान सरी एन्नु ओर वन्मत्तुडन नान एनुडय उन्मयय नान उर्दिपड़त्तिकिन्रे ओर वन्मत्तुडन अदय तान भगवान सेल्फ असर्टिव वायलेंस एन्नु कुरिकिन्डर नान निनेप्पुदुदान सरी मत्रवरगल निनेप्पुदु तवरय एन्नु नान कुरिकिन्रे एनुडय कोर्टपाडुदान आन्मयक कोर्टपाडुदान इदु भगवान कुरुवदु इल्लामय आन्मय नेलयली कुरिकिन्डर एनुडय आन्मय कोर्टपाडुदान सरी मत्रोडय आन्मय कोर्टपाडु तवरय एन्नु नान बादिडिकिन्रे कोराड़किन्रे इदल एल्लात्तुन कार्नो इंदी कल्परित वंदे द वर्ड्स वार्तेगलदान एन्नु भगवान कुरिप्पडिकिन्डर वार्तेगल ओर आरेखुरयान मनदिन मोलम विळिप्पड़त्त पट्टुल्ला वार्तेगल एन्नु भगवान कुरिप्पडिकिन्डर मेलुम भगवान कुरिप्पय एन्ना कुरिप्पडिकिन्डर वन्राल इंदा परम्परुलय कुरितु नाम ओर एन्नत्य ओरुवाक्कुम्बोरुदु नम्रोडय ओर पर्सेप्शन ओर नैरो पर्सेप्शन ओर कुरैंद पुरिदल अदन मोलमाहत्तान परम्परुलय नाम अरिंदुहुल्लिन्रो अदनाल ओवर तनीनाबरणुडय पुरिदलुम मार्बड़िकिन्डुदु एन्न्राल ओवर तनीनाबरुम अवरक्किन्रे इरु कमक्यप्पट्टल्ला ओर कुरिया पार्वयल्दान अंदा परम्परुलय कानिकिन्डर अदनालदान अवरुडय पुरिदलुम मत्रोडय पुरिदलुम इदु इरूंदकुम इडय ओर वत्तीसविन्मय कानपड़िकिन्डु अनाल द ब्रह्मन एन्नपदु ओन्रुदान अदु वंदा मारादुदु आइडेंटिकल इरूंदालुम नाम एन्नसैकिन्रो नान पुरिंदुहुंद विदत्तय मात्तिरम उन्मयदान एन्नु नाम नाम ओर वन्मयाह अदय नाम वादिडिकिन्रो मत्रवरगल उनुडय पुरिदल तवरय एन्नु नाम वादिडिकिन्रो अदय तान भगवान एन्ना कुरिकिन्डर इदय नाम ओर एगोइस्टिक वी असर्ट एगोइज़्म ऑफ ओर ओपिनियंस इदल वंदे एदु मेलुंगिक कानपड़िकिन्डुदु वन्राल द नान एनकिन्रा तन्नुनर एगोइसम एनके एयरपट्ट ओर आरेखुरय अनुभवत्तय वेतुकुंद एनुडय ओर एगोविन अडिप्पडय मत्रवरगल के एयरपट्ट ओर आरेखुरय अनुभवम अवरुडय एगो इव इरूंदकुम इडयल ओर मुरणपाट्टय ओर पोराट्टय नान युंडाक्किन्रे अहयाल दान भगवान एन्ना कुरिकिन्डर द आन्मय विषयंगलय कुरितु पेसुम्बोरुदु रम्ब चाकर्त्यारक्नो अप्परिंगर भगवान एन्ना कारणम वन्राल एन्ना आन्मय विषयंगल कुरितु पेसेकिन्रो इदु वरुम तेरी कड़यादु वरुम अकादमिक इंटरेस्ट कड़यादु एन्ना कारणम एन्ना कारणत्यनाल नम्म आन्मय विषयंगल कुरितु पेसेकिन्रो वन्राल अडिप्पड़े कारणम एन्ना वन्राल नम्रोडय ओर पूर्णम पूर्णत्तुम नाम पूर्णत्तुत्त एट्टुवदरकाहत्तान द इरेवन कुरित विषयंगलय कुरितु अनिवरम पेसेकिन्रो अवार सय्यम्बोरुदु अवार पेसुम्बोरुदु एन्नसैकिन्रो वेयर वज़ियिन्रे मनदम ओर आरेखुरयान मनम अदन मोलमाह विळिप्पड़त्त विळिप्पड़त्त पड़ुम वार्तेगल इदन मोलमाह अपेसेकिन्रो उन्मयलय अंदा देवीहम देवीहम इल्ला अंदा परम्परुल इदु कुरित विषयंगलय वार्तेगलिनाल नम्मल विळक्कमुडियादु इद्दा उन्मयय नाम अरिंदुहुल्ला वेंडुम एन्नु भगवान कुरिप्पडिकिन्डर इदय इंदा उन्मयय नाम अरिंदुहुंद ओर नाम वंदे एप्पोरुदमय वंदे नम्रोडम ओर एल्यमय एरिक कानपड़ुम ओर ह्यूमिलिटी ओर इंस्टिट्ट ऑफ अरेगन्स नान निनेप्पुदुदान सरी एन्नु निनेकुम ओर ओर मुर्गतनमान ओर पोकियरक्कु पदलाह ओर तन्नडक्कम केनिडम कानपड़ु एन्न्राल नान नान निनेप्पुदु नान पेसुदु इल्लामय ओर आरेखुरयान विष्यम तान नान पेसकुडय विष्यम एनुडय वार्तेगलक्कल्लाम अप्पार्प्पट्टुदु एनकिन्रा उन्मयय नान अरिंदुहुंद पेसवेंडुम एन्नु भगवान कुरिप्पडिकिन्डर अवार पेस नेयर्न्दालुम कोड़े एन्नसैवेंडुम अदुकु भगवान एन्ना कुरिकिन्डर नाम मिघुम ओर अहंड विसालमान ओर पार्वयली पार्कवेंडु मिघुम ओर इलगय ओर मनदुडन ओर विसालमान पार्वयुडन अनित्यम तर्वय नेलयल्दान इदय अड़कवेंडुम उड़य ओर कुरिया पार्वयल इदय अड़ककोड़ादु एन्नु भगवान कुरिप्पडिकिन्डर अवार कुरिया पार्वयल इदय अड़किन्नल एन्ना अड़क्कम वन्राल इंदे पिरिवुम इंदा वत्तीसय वट्र तन्मयुदान एयरपड़ुम एन्नु भगवान कुरिप्पडिकिन्डर अहयाल भगवान इंग एन्ना कुरिप्पडिकिन्डर वन्राल नाम काठिरक्कुवेंडुम ओर उन्मयय अरिवदरक्कुमुन्नाल अदय अदु कुरित अनुभवत्तय अडैवदरक्कुमुन्नाल नमकत्त तेवय पूर्मय वी हैव तू वेट अप्परिंगर वी शुड नॉट बी हेस्टी इन ओर अफर्मेशन ओर अनुभव नमकत्त किट्टिकिन्डुदु अंदा अनुभवत्तय आवशरपट्ट अदुदान इरु अर्धयान अनुभवम इंदे नाम ऊर्जितपड़त्त कोड़ादु एन्नु भगवान कुरिप्पडिकिन्डर एन्न्राल नम्रोडय अंदा न्यानम वंदे ओर आरेखुरयान न्यानम इन्नेडिक्वेट नॉलेज इदलिरंदु नाम विदुबड़ा वेंडु नम्रोडय उनरुनेलय अनित्यम तर्वय उनरुनेलयाह एरक्कवेंडु अप्पोरुदुदान इंदा प्रश्निगल इंदा इरेवन कुरित विळक्कनल कानपड़ु इंदा कुरैपाड़गल मुरणपाड़गल इदलिरंदु नाम विदुबड़ुओ एन्नु भगवान कुरिप्पडिकिन्डर पैराग्राफ सेवन टेन इदु वंदे ये लेंदु पत्तु वरिकुम पोन सेशनल नम्म पार्तो इंदा सेशनल नम्म पैराग्राफ 11 लेंदु नाम तोड़रल्ला
लाइफ डिवाइन बुक वन चैप्टर फोर रियालिटी ओम्नी प्रेसेंट पैराग्राफ 11 we recognize then that it is possible for the consciousness in the individual to enter into a state in which relative existence appears to be dissolved and even self seems to be an inadequate conception it is possible to pass into a silence beyond the silence but this is not the whole of our ultimate experience nor the single and all excluding truth for we find that this Nirvana this self extinction while it gives an absolute peace and freedom to the soul within is yet consistent in practice with a desireless but effective action without
Thank you explanation yes please
Can I read it?
Yes please
Explanation in a in a state of Nirvana there is dissolution of personal self conception in that state one can pass pass into a silence beyond silence
Surjaya you can you read from the beginning there was some 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 words where we couldn't hear
in the state of Nirvana there is dissolution of personal self in the consciousness the relative existence seems to be dissolved that is Atma seems to be an inadequate conception in that state one can pass into a silence beyond silent Sir Avinash mentions here that this is not the whole of our intimate experience nor the Nirvani experience is the soul truth excluding all others Nirvani state gives an absolute peace and freedom to the soul within yet one can perform in that state an effective and desireless action externally thank you sir
Thank you, thank you
even Buddha mother till Buddha mother till or a Ucha Katta an about a a in a part of in the Muthi the liberation in the Nirvana in the Nilla or a or a or a yet Tia Pinnam Koda our in the world at the say Alba Dada here come a windum in the a wasiam illa in the Bahavan career predicand that it is a that I know the Aranamaha Bahavan and the Buddha in or a say Alba T previous paragraph a little Kina Buddha when the and the Nirvana the state of Nirvana the yet in the Alum Koda our on the or a mega period or powerful personality or mega period mega Sakti Wayne the army my poor India or a say Alba Dtar our own a talk am and in the world at the me have um or a very a talk amaha is the the in the in the career Pita at the and the ah it is a one the our Dian or a Carrot to on the ever a Moran part of the in the come a Kedra our Dian in a Kourin our Dian the world at the Nadi very man at the vision Goliath in the and the Nirvana Nella Nirvana the state of Nirvana at the Ettu Adar than Letya Nella in the Kourin Anna Buddha and the Nilla yet Tia Pinnam Koda in the world at the or a me have um or Sakti Wayne the or army my Konda or or a or a say Alba Dtar in the Nam park in Rome ah we it is a or a Moran Bada Moran Bada the our our Dian or a code partill can get Rome Morand the Moran Bada the can get Rome or were on the Nilla yet Tua Talum Koda our on the muchilumaha are in the in the and the Nilla on the silence beyond silence in the Bahavan career predicand that at the on the or Ucha Katta Nella silence beyond silence in the Bahavan will a Kedra Anna in the in the an about mandu or a irudiana an about Kdaya the it is not our ultimate experience in the career in the and the Nilla at and the order no other than it is a than sorry it is a than in the irudiana an about it is a than sorry in the or were and the Nilla part a Kola moody ah the in the Bahavan career predicand that but our Nilla part of on my allah in the Kourin the Tawari in the Bahavan career predicand that no doubt and the Nirvani state on the order come the or a more me a na amaidi Kedra the absolute peace and freedom to the soul within Ullir Kkodi on Manuk or a poorana wid a late Kedra in the Alum Koda or were Tannure a poor a vaal will or a mehachchera the mullayil tirambar asailba de moody um evide Patrum illa Malava Raja say Alba de moody um in the Bahavan career predicand that the Nishkama Karmangartha on my lay a Panna moody um a dinga Nam and the Nilla yet Tia Pinnam Koda or were world at the world a lipper a say Alba Daga Lille in the village here come a windy a wasiam illa in the Bahavan career predicand that
Next paragraph
This possibility of an entire motionless impersonality and void calm within doing outwardly the works of the eternal verities love, truth and righteousness was perhaps the real gist of the Buddha's teaching this superiority to ego and to the chain of personal workings and to the identification with mutable form and idea not the petty ideal of an escape from the trouble and suffering of the physical birth
Thank you explanation Yes madam
The Arabindo inventions here the essentials of Buddha's teaching it is possible for one to reach the state of an entire motionless impersonality one can have an emptiness filled with calm within still outwardly one can do the works of eternal principles of truth reflecting love, truth and righteousness here one subordinates one's ego he is above the chain of personal workings that is karma he surpasses all identification with mutable that undergoes change transient form and idea this is the central message of Buddha it is not the petty ideal of escape from the trouble and suffering of physical birth thank you sir
Thank you
Annyeong Kourvar Buddha or a call me and um in the world at the piraka near the our Dian in the Buddha mother mandu Purya the a dinga mother Buddha came in the Tondi now the Buddha mother they are all putting the hole a moody ah the in the Bahavan in the Annyeong career predicand that or a way to Kya career predicand that in the car and I'm in the the Buddha mother till on the a lot of Kilegal Tondri one or one or one or more but a Kilegal Tondri the pole than but our Madangal Ilum it is career the Annyeong in a career in the it take a avadarangal Buddha Christ it is on the avadarangal on the or a mother they never a windum in the no Katan our Dian say Alba de our Dian or on my a Kandar in the and the on my a world a world here come teary with the a lot of the at the a deep body I'll on the or a amai pay or whoa come a windum but our Dian Pilla in the where but amai pay or whoa come a windum either on amai pay or whoa come a windum in the Lam in the in no Katan our Dian or whoa come a then our Dian our Dian our Dian or a Vadi Tondri our Dian than in a say the in the our Dian and the avadarangal Kandar in the on my a lay avar 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 Purya Muri putting the Kondu weber Kilegal a air peddled the at the than on the Lille in the Matru Moran part a amai Puglaga or a amai Pugl Tondri it is Ela amai Puglilum Nam can get Rome Ela Madangal Ilum Nam it a can get Rome Buddha mother till on the or were on the Nirvana and the liberation Muthi it is a yet Tia Odon say Alba de here come a windum say Alba Dama Lille here come a windum in the world at the world a say Alba Daga Lille in the village here come a windum in the in the or a deep body on a Carrot the village Nella Kedra Anna a bar here come a windy a wasiam illa or were and our Dian come the or or a ah a Nella or poorana Mouna the yet Tia Pinnarum Koda our own a poor a say Alba Daga Lille Anbu on my or a Sariana Vatra Seidel in the Irayamsangal avar all our Dian say Alba T lipper to the moody um in the Bahavan career predicand that on my lay a in the but on my lay a Buddha Sully and the most and the liberation in the in the it is a on the Bahavan on the Buddha mother trick a or a Sariana village at the in the Bahavan in the she Arabindha target in the target in the in the on my lay a our Korea the in the in the liberation in the Muthi in the Tannure a ego not in the Tannure that is muchilumaha are it to Kolda that is the subordinates one ego at the name of my a than say Alba Dama a day Namak the tear peddled the say Alba de that is the in the Nadi Kedra ah yeah or were or a egoless action and the Nilla in the in the air peddled air peddled air peddled in the in the our Dian or a our Dian car and a Karyangal Kover poor part of a ah in the he is above the chain of personal workings Karma it is Kandusel in the at the pole in the more um Tannure Utra Amssangal more um Tannure Ula Amssangal vision Goliath Eva Gali Eva Gali Eva Gali all our Kandan Nilla Kusel in the he surpasses all identification with mutable form and idea it is the Buddha in or a or a my a Carrot my a central message of Buddha in the she Arabindha career in the the world at the in the Tappi Tichelva the Kdaya the it is not the petty ideal of escape from the trouble and suffering of physical birth in the Pirevi Aile in the wid with the Kondu Tappi Tichelva windum in the Buddha in or a or a Seidey Kdaya the in the Carrot the Bahavan Teliwaha career in the Buddha mother Tinar Veru Akya Kourin on my lay a in the in the Bahavan in the Namak the Teliwaha
Next polar number
In any case as the perfect man would combine in himself the silence and the activity so also would the completely conscious soul reach back to the absolute freedom of the non-being without therefore losing its hold on existence and the universe it would thus reproduce in itself perpetually the eternal miracle of the divine existence in the universe yet always beyond it and even as it were beyond itself the opposite experience could only be a concentration of mentality in the individual upon non-existence with the result of an oblivion and personal withdrawal from a cosmic activity still and always proceeding in the consciousness of the eternal being
Thank you explanation
Sir Padi tingla
Yes madam
As we have already seen a perfect man would act from the voice of silence within so also a completely conscious soul would reach back to the absolute freedom of non-being yet it would it would retain its hold on existence and the universe the soul would reproduce in itself perpetually the eternal miracle of the divine existence in the universe yet it remains above its actions and above itself the opposite experience can happen if the individual mentality concentrates upon non-existence the individual withdraws himself into oblivion into oblivion he withdraws himself from the cosmic activity still and always proceeds in the consciousness of the eternal being thank you sir
Thank you, thank you
Or were poorana Mouna the Tannure a ah a Jeevanil get to in the and the poorana Mouna till in the or were say Alba Dama our on the or a more me a na manidara here come a Nam here come a part of a pretty or were poor pura Til say Alba de windum in the Ulla or calm within and the a deep body Nam say Alba Dama than Nam or a say Alga mega Chirapa Ami Kedra in the it is chapter la part of the pole the or were or a on man or a more me a na wid a late Peta Nilla and the non-being in the Ela Kandan Nilla at the Kedra a bar a Randa Pinnarum Koda at the in the Prabhanja till in the muchilumaha at the village here come a Tannure a Europe amin the Prabhanja till at the Taka with the Kondu a bar than say Alba Dedra the in the Bahavan career predicand that the pole a bar or wid a late a Randa on my in a say Kedra the in the Tannay Pondre and the Tannak Tannak the air pettine Nilla Toder and the at the but our Dian Kumi air peddled the Kondu here come a the soul with group reproduce in itself perpetually the eternal miracle of the divine existence in the universe a bar in the Alum Koda at the Ela with a man say Alga Kama part of the he were the or a Muthiya Danda on my a Tia Danda on my in the the world a say Alba Daga Lille in the at the village here come a we're in the in the a wasiam Kdaya the and the Carrot the Bahavan career predicand that at the on my lay a Muthiya Dinda Alum Koda at the in a say Kedra the in the Prabhanja till at the Tannure a Europe a Taka with the Kolda Kedra the pole at Tannure and the eternal miracle of the divine existence in the universe the Irivan or a and the Europe a day Toder and the Tannay Lille in the at the Tootravit Tootravit the Kondae here come a in the in the Bahavan or a village at the target a bar say the Alum at the at the Kama part of the Nilla here come a in the Bahavan career predicand that Idu oru vidamana nelai, matruvar nelai, idakke edharaana nelayam erikkindradu. Edharaana nelai, edharaana nelai, eppeer, evaar irikkindradu enraal, verum andha illada nelai, the non-existence, the negative, adu vandu oru negative, edhirmaryana oru anubom, adilayay irundukol, irundukolvadu. The opposite experience could only be a concentration of mentality in the individual upon non-existence. Adilayay irunduvadu, undayenelai mukthi adandha pinnarum, indha prabanjathtil tanudiyah iruppay takkavaitukundu, meendum meendum tanneirundhey, indha devihamsthati thottruvipadu, idu undayenelai. Pindayenelai edhirmaryana nelai, pindayenelai muttrilumaga thane viduvithukolvadu. Oru ondremillaadu nelaki sendru viduvadu, indha prabanjanaadavadikihalirundu muttrilumaga thane velakikolvadu. Irundhalum, adha andha paramboruludan, paramboruludan, muttrilumaga oru aikyappattan nelailirikadu. Idi irandavatanelai, indha irandavatanelai ettiyavarugadu daan, andha, andha thuravumana pahnmi udayavargal, indha prabanjathinudiyah naadavadikihalirundu muttrilumaga velahi irupvargal. Avargalikoruthu, arikkandha prabanjathinudiyah naadavadikihalillamay oru unmayatravay, enr, enr nelayay ettu vargal. Ahayal, indha irandhaneligalam sathiyam. Irandavatanelai maathiram daan unmai enr, nelai kadayaadu, oruvar, oruvar uyeryanelai ettiyapin narum kodaa, indha prabanjath, prabanjanaadavadikihalil thodrandhu sailbadilirikamudiyum, enbadi daan bhavan koorakkudiyah indha karuthu. Paragraph twelve polo number.
Paragraph twelve. Thus, after reconciling spirit and matter in the cosmic consciousness, we perceive the reconciliation in the transcendental consciousness of the final assertion of all and its negation. We discover that all affirmations are assertions of status or activity in the unknowable. All the corresponding negations are assertions of its freedom, both from and in that status or activity.
Thank you, explanation.
Sir, padiklamah?
Ah, padige.
Spirit and matter are...
Telagad madam, padige.
Namakisir. The spirit and matter are reconciled in cosmic consciousness. All final assertions and negations are reconciled in transcendent consciousness. All affirmations are assertions of status or activity in the unknowable. All corresponding negations represent the freedom of the unknowable. Freedom from what? Freedom from status or activity and freedom in that status and activity. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, thank you. The unarvunnelaila, nambo vandu individual consciousnessla erikro. Individual consciousness, endhi eppeer, vandu, nammudiyah egovay saarunda andha unarvunnelai. The individual consciousnessla erikvarikun, nambo vandu divided, divideda erikro, pirivupattan nelailirikkindrom. Andhan nelaila parthukundu, namakondu, the mayippurulum, sadappurulum, veveeraha terikindana. Nam, na, nammudiyah unarvunnelaila, naam, oru tanipattataan enginra tanunarvay saarunda irukku marail, indha sadappurulum, mayippurulum, veveeraha terikindana. Naam, nammudiyah unarvunnelaila uyirundu, andha prabanjamthaviyah unarvunnelai, cosmic consciousness. The cosmic consciousnessna enna artam? Ipavandu naan irikkindran, naan ennay, ennudiyah tanipattavudal manam, vaavvay enginra, tanipattan amshathudan, ennay adyalapadithikundru, naan enginra tanunarudan, taniyaha, tani, oru unarv, taniyana oru unarvunnelailirikkindra, adu da individual egoistic consciousness. Cosmic consciousnesska enna artam, dina? Andha yenakkum, matra amshangalakkum, indha ulagathil kanaapadum amshangalakkum, vithyasme kadayaadu. Ellamy onr, andha cosmic consciousnessla, naan, indha prabanjam, idhrendum, tanithaniyana amshangal, alla enr, ennamay andha erkadu, ellamy onr, enginra, unarvunnelailirikko, anga maarbade erkadu. So, andhan nelaila automatic enna ayadu enraal, the spirit and matter enbadi, mayippurulum, sadappurulum, anga, oru otthisayvay, otthisayvay, otthisayvadu, namgi kanaapadikindana. Idu vandu cosmic consciousnessla, individual consciousnessla, ellam veer, division. Adukaaduthan nelail kanaapadum cosmic consciousnessla, spirit and matter vandanga, oru otthisayvadu, odan, undakappadikindradu. Idhar kaaduthan nelai erikkindradu, adu da ellam kadandhan nelai, andha transcendent consciousness. Indha sottadargalna, nambo vandu, meendum meendum parthikindrom, live divine, almost, narayya parthirukko. Individual, cosmic, transcendent, indha karundhavilakkangal, bhavan meendum meendum namakka koorikindra. Indha transcendent consciousnesstha, ucha kattan nelai, ellam kadandhan nelai. Andhan nelaila, ellavidamana uruthipadugalum, ellavidamana marupugal, uruthipadugal, marupugal, assertions and negations. Anga otthisayvakka, otthisayvakka padikindana, enr bhavan kooripadikindra. Evaar otthisayvakka padikindana, enraal, indha, oru sailbadu, oru ondri nelai, ivayalillam, andha ellam kadandhan nelail, uruthipadutha padikindana. Ellavidamana sailbadugalum, ellavidamana oru nelai, status, ivayalillamay, andha ellam kadandhan nelail, uruthipadutha padikindana. Adha andhan nelaila edhumi velakkapaduvadu illa, ellamy uruthipadutha padikindana. Anga vandu edhumi excursionay kadayaadu, ellamy vandu uruthipadutha padikindana, all affirmations. Onray uruthipaduthikindrom enraal, adai, adhak, adhakku, ottam, marupugalum, erik, erikkakodu, liya, orunray, nam, undu, undu, endhu sollumbodu, kodave, adu illa enginra, oru marupum kodave erikkindradu. Appreindral, andha marupugal, enraal, enna enraal, bhavan inge vilakkathay tarikindra. Ingge prabanjathtilirikakoodi, aniththu vishayengalum, andha ellam kadandhan nelail, uruthi sayyapadikindana. Adesamayam, ellavidam marupugalum, edai suttikaattikindana enraal, evayallam uruthi sayyappattanavoh, evayal, evaygalin molamahaillam, evaygalin molamahavelam, andha mayippurut thane velipadithikolikindradu, velipadithikolikindradu, avayalilillam irundu vidubattirikkum, oru purna sudandhrathitha, andha marukkal koorikindradu. Onr, aniththunullum irkkakoodiyanelai, adu da uruthipadu. Matruvar, aniththunullum irundhalum kodaa, adanilirundum vidubattirikkum, adanudiyah purna sudandhiramana nelai, adu da maruttal. Ahayal, unmeylaye maruttal enbadi, illaadu, enbadi kadayaadu, maruttal enbadi, unmeylaye onray, iruppadai, illa endhu solluvadu kadayaadu. Iruppadilirundu vidubattirikkum nelai, adu taan bhavan inge kooripadikindra. Bhavanudiyah, indha vaartheyalye parthamanraal, namakka puriyam. We discover that all affirmations are assertions of status or activity in the unknowable. So, idu purikindradu namakka, ellamy, adu yedhi, marupadai illa, ellamy vandu omnipresent reality da. Adi pola, all the corresponding negations, illa endhu kuruvaadu, illa endhu kuruvaadhal, unmeylaye adu illa endhu, ahivadadu. All the corresponding negations are assertions of its freedom. Andha paramborulinudiyah purna sudandhiram, inge aniththunullum, kanaappattalam kodaa, adhayum, thaandi irikkakoodiya, andha sudandhiramana nelai, adu taan, andha negations, marupugal, therivikindana, enr bhavan kooripadikindra. All the corresponding negations are assertions of its freedom, both from and in that status of activity. Edhaka, edhakaruthi bhavan kooripadikindara, enraal, indha ulagathila vandu, ulagathil kanaakoodi, aniththunullum, brahmanerikindra. Indha ulagaththi vandu, nambo vandu, oru kanavu enr, oru poiyendru, nammalavandu, odikittalamudiyadu. Ingge kanaappadum aniththunullum, andha paramborul irundhalum kodaa, avayalay kadandhum, aparpattan nelailirikkindradu daan enbadi, enbadi, enbadi daan unmai taviyara. Ingge irkkakoodiyavishayengal vandu, poiyana vishayengalok, kanavok kadayaadu, enginra mayavada karuthi taan bhavan, inge, marukkum mannam, indha vaakyathay bhavan koorikindra. Adhutthu polo number.
The unknowable is something to us supreme, wonderful and ineffable, which continually formulates itself to our consciousness and continually escapes from the formulation it has made. This it does not as some malicious spirit or freakish magician, leading us from falsehood to greater falsehood and so to a final negation of all things, but as even here, the wise beyond our wisdom, guiding us from reality to ever profounder and vaster reality, until we find the profoundest and vastest of which we are capable. An omnipresent reality is the Brahman, not an omnipresent cause of persistent illusions.
Explanation.
Sir, padikittuna?
Yes, madam.
Explanation. Sri orabindho here mentions the unknowable as something to us supreme, wonderful and ineffable, that is cannot be described in words. It continually formulates itself to our consciousness, yet it continually escapes from the formulation it has made. This is not an act of some malicious spirit or the work of a strange magician. If that is so, it would lead us from falsehood to greater falsehood. It would lead us to a final negation of all things. But it is a greater wisdom beyond ours, guiding us from reality to ever profounder and vaster reality. It continues to lead us till we find the profoundest and the vastest of which we are capable. Sri orabindho concludes this paragraph with a profound statement that an omnipresent reality is the Brahman, not an omnipresent cause of persistent illusions.
Thank you, thank you. The paramboru in the supreme Brahman, idu ellam nam parthukundu, nihum oru aacharyamana oru vishyamaha parthikindrom, vaartheyalal nammal, adh, nammal, velakkamudivadu illai. Epeerpattavargalakkukodaa, the irayanvom, divine experience, avangal, avangludiyah unarvunnelaila, kittinalam kodaa, edo oru vaheyil, avargalakkor oru anubom, the devam, the devamsam kuritha, andha irayanubom, avargalakkutkitikindradu. Avarudiyah unarvunnelail, kitikindradu, avar kittinalam kodaa, adu, yenda vaheyil kittiyyado, adu thodrandhu, andha vaheyilirundu, maarikundey erikkindradu, oru kuripitta vaheyil maathiram, adu iruppadu illai. Idu da andha paramborulinudiyah oru, oru mukhyamana amsham, adu edukame kattupadadu. Adhaladhan bhavan enna koorikindra. It continually, continually formulates itself to our consciousness and continually escapes from the formulation it has made. Adu da paramborulinudiyah, brahmaninudiyah oru aacharyamana oru amsham. Adu, aanmeyham yoga, yogi galakkum, laanmeyha, nilaila, yernelaila ettiyavargalakkum kodaa, the aanmeyha anubothin molamahat thane velipadithikundu erikkindradu, thodrandhu velipadithikundu erikkindradu. Anaal, oray anubom, andha kittekoodi anubom, oray madhriaga inppiruppadu illa. Oru anubom kitikindradu, matruvar anubom, veraor madhri erikkindradu, matruvar anubom, veraor madhri erikkindradu. Idu da aacharyamana vishyam. Adhaladhan, annay, oruvarudiyah prayers and meditationla koorikindra, enna koorikindara enraal? Anmeyha payanathila vandu, oru anubom, namakka kitikindradu enr vaitukolluom. Andha anubom vandu oru ariyapukishamaga, nam ennikindrom, oru unnada anubomaga ennikindrom. Anaal, adiyay anubothi nam gettiyaga pidithukundu, mailum, mailum namkakittakoodi anubomgalailirundu, namai, oru velakikollu, kollum nelail, irunduvidal kodade, enr, annay koorikindara, oruvarudiyah prayers and meditationla. Edna, ennadhaan, the aanmeyha anubomgal, unnadamanaadaha irundhalum kodaa, adiyay gettiyaga pidithukundu, merekundu, nam kitthum, anubom, kitthum, mailum adhunnamana anubomgal, anubomgalakku, oru tadayaha nam irunduvidal kodade, enr, annay koorikindara. Enna karana enraal, yallarkame vandu, andha paramborukurutha anubom vandu, oray madhriaga irikkadu, irkkadu, ellasamathil oray madhriaga irikkadu, irkkadu, unarvunnelail, adu maarikundey erikko. Continually formulates itself to our consciousness and continually escapes from the formulation it has made. Adu yendhavidamana oru, oru amayippukullum kattupadadu. Idu vandu paramborulinudiyah, paramborukuritha anubom, idu yallarkam eerpaduk, eerpadakoodi anubothi taan, inge, shi orabindho velakkahindra. Idan karana magave, nam yenda mudiyukvarakodadu, yenda mudiyukvarakodadu enraal, itthakayasail enbadi, oru thiya, nokudan, sailbadum, oru amayppin, sailbadu, illa, oru mayavadiin, sailbadu, enr, nam ninathividal kodade, enr, bhavan kooripadikindra. Enna koorikindara enraal? This, it, this it does not as some malicious spirit, malicious spirit enna artam? Oru thiya shakti, thiya ennatudan sailbadum oru shakti. This it does not as some malicious spirit or freakish magician, abdingda, oru mayavadi. Freakishan enna artam? Abnormala sailbadum, oru sailbadu, adu da freakishan artam. Freakish magician, leading us from falsehood to greater falsehood. Namai oru poiymailirundu, adhalidum, oru, periyavaru poiymaiakku, namay arithisellum, oru mayavadi, mayavadiin, sailbadu, sailbaduaga, nam ninathividal kodade, enr, bhavan kooripadikindra. Avar ninathividal enna, abdingna, appreirundhal, ellatiyam, kadasal ennadu, yenda unmai nam maladayaamudiyadu, ellay, anathim, maruthukundey nam selluom. Avari illai, unmeylaye andha sailbadu evaaraha minthuladu enraal, bhavan enna koorikindara enraal? It is a greater wisdom beyond our, beyond ours. Nammudiyah nyanaththayvada, oru migavuyerya nyanamaga oru sailbadum, amsham daan, andha mayippuru. It is a greater wisdom beyond our, beyond ours. Adu namai variganathiselkindradu, oru unmaiilirundu, adhininum, mailana, aaramana, paramda unmaiakkun, namay arithiselkindradu, enr, bhavan kooripadikindra. Bhavanudiyah vaartheyal rum aadaha irikkindana. But as even here, the wise beyond our wisdom, guiding us from reality to ever profounder and vaster reality, until we find the profoundest and vastest of which we are capable. Idai, idu vandu, namai overwork, overwork, overvarium, andha paramboru, avar da nam arithiselkindradu. Iridiyana unmai, anith, anith, aniththim kadandha oru unmai, anith, ellad, ellor paramda virinda unmai, oru aaramana unmai. Adai nam ettikindra varikun, namay andha unmaiinoki, indha paramboru, namay arithiselkindradu, enginra, oru karuthi bhavan kooripadikindra. Adi, idu vandu bhavan vandu kooruvadi, anitho, anivarakum porundho. Adhaladhan bhavan irudiyaha enna koorikindra? The ulagathaini, nambo vandu, mayam, mayam, maya enr kooruvadu tavaru, poiymay enr kooruvadu tavaru, enna karana enraal? Ingga aniththunullum irkkakoodi oru maymedhaan, andha brahman. An omnipresent reality is a brahman. Maya, a maya tree. Who is a maya? An omnipresent reality is a Brahman, not an omnipresent cause of persistent illusions. Persistent illusions what is it? A maya trees are constantly reflected. There is no reason for the Paramboru. That is why God asks. Why God asked? The theory of maya. The world is, the problem is, there is no truth. This. All is in a colored world. The Brahman is the truth. The maya is not the truth. This is the fact. Next.
Paragraph thirteen. If we thus accept a positive basis for harmony and on what others can harmony be founded? The various conceptual formulations of the unknowable, each of them representing a truth beyond conception, must be understood as far as possible in their relation to each other and in their effect upon life, not separately, not exclusively, not so affirmed as to destroy or unduly diminish all other affirmations.
Thank you, explanation.
Sir, Padi. Padi Kita.
Yes, madam.
We have seen, we have seen various conceptual formulations, that is Buddhist, monistic, Advaitic, Vedantic of the unknowable. They are different approaches to the unknowable. Yet we must find a harmony among these different parts. This harmony can be ensured only by accepting a positive basis behind all these conceptions regarding the unknowable. Each of them represents a truth beyond conception. Each must not be viewed as separate and exclusive truth. If we do so, we will affirm the one and negate the other. Instead, each must be understood as far as possible in their relation to the other and in their effect upon life.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. If we take a spiritual picture. What are the questions? Buddhism. In the monistic Advaitism. What are the questions? There are many questions. We should not see all of them. They are all. Their mind is the same. If they have a mind, they are reflecting. Who reflects the Paramboru? This is their mind. Why anyone can't think of it? However, if the questions are different. There is no agreement. Why God asks? We should have a different attitude. We should have a agreement. Who has a agreement? That is. All questions. There is a positive thing. There is a positive thing. We should see it. After all the questions. There is a positive thing. We should see it. This is the question. We should have a agreement. That is why God asks. Because every question has a truth. We are thinking. Even if we don't see it. We should not see it. We should not see it. If we see it, what will we do? Do we do it? We will remove it. There is no need. Anybody. We should understand it. We should know. We should know. We should know. We should understand it. This is a feeling. For the people of the divine. We should see it. A good feeling. Why? If we read the teachings of God. We should read the teachings of other religions. Spiritual texts. If we read them. We should understand it. That is why I ask. If you can understand Sri Aravind though, you can understand all spiritual truths. That is why I ask. Because of this, God's teachings are illuminated. If anything is reflected. If a truth is given. If a truth is given. We should understand it. We should do whatever. Whatever we do, we will find it. Because of this, God's teachings are illuminated. This is why many people read it. If you understand Sri Aravind though, you can understand all other spiritual texts. Because of this, God is in the Lord. This is the reason. God's teachings are reflected. He is sitting in his corner. He is not reflected. What is the truth? How can we find it? We should find it. Next.
The real monism, the true Advaita, that which admits all things as the one Brahman and does not seek to existent into two compatible entities, an eternal truth and eternal falsehood, Brahman, not Brahman, self of self, a real self and an unreal yet perpetual Maya. If true that self alone exists, it must be also true that all is the self. And if this self, god of Brahman, is no helpless state, no bounded power, no limited personality, but the self-conscious all, there must be some good and inherent reason in it for the manifestation. Discover which we must proceed on the hypothesis of some potency, some truth of being in all that is manifested.
Padi Kita. Hello?
Padi, please.
Sri Aravind. Explanation. Sri Aravind describes here what true Advaita, real monism is. It admits all things as one Brahman. It does not create a division of itself into two incompatible, mutually not agreeable entities like an eternal truth and an eternal falsehood, Brahman and not Brahman, self and not self, a real self and an unreal Maya. It says self alone exists, then it is equally true that all is the self. There is nothing which is not self. This self, god or Brahman is the self-conscious all. It is not a helpless state, not a power bounded within limits, not a limited personality. Then there must be some good reason for the Brahman to manifest in the universe. We can suppose that there is some potency, that is strength, some wisdom, some truth of being in all that is manifested in the universe. Proceeding on this hypothesis assumption, we can manifestation of Brahman. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, thank you. Advaitam what is it? In the Advaitam. A good one. We are reflecting. This is the maya Advaitam. That is the good one. We are reflecting. What is it? Brahman Satim Jagannamitya. That is the Brahman is the truth. This is the problem. A joke. A dream. A maya. A maya. This is the Advaitam. We are reflecting. However, what do you ask? The true Advaita is in the God. Real monism. True Advaita is that all is Brahman. Brahman, Brahman is not. That is the true Advaita. What is the real monism? God knows. What is the reason? We should see it. As the Brahman's reflection. There is no reflection. Brahman, Brahman is not. That is not reflected. Like this. There is no difference between you. A strange. You are not the same. You are a good one. You are a bad one. There is no difference between you. You are Brahman. You are Brahman. There is no difference. Like this, self and not self, a real self and unreal Maya. This is all difference. There is no difference. What is it? Brahman alone exists, self alone exists. Like this. What is it? The Brahman. All is the self. There is nothing which is not self. There is no Brahman. This is the self, this god, this Brahman. The self-conscious. It is in a colored world. Self-conscious. It is in a colored world. It is not a good one. A good one. It is not a helpless state. There is no difference between you. Not a power bounded within limits. A good one. Not a limited personality. Like this, what do you ask? If you are like this, Brahman is a good one. If you are like this, Brahman is a good one. You should reflect. That is why God asks. The problem is that everything is in a colored world. Why is it difficult? A good one. If you reflect. If you are like this, Brahman is a good one. There must be some good reason for the Brahman to manifest in the universe. In this world, in this problem. You should see it. A good one. A good one. A good one. In this problem. A knowledge, a good one. She is there. This is the question. If we see it. We should know. Why is Brahman reflecting? That is why we should see it. What do you ask? There must be some good and inherent reason in it for the manifestation. To discover which, to discover which. To discover the reason. To discover which, we must proceed on the hypothesis of some potency, some wisdom, some truth of being in all that is manifested. This is not a good one. A silly thing, a bad thing. There is a good one. There is a truth. This is the reason. If we reflect. We should have a doubt. Why is Brahman reflecting? That is why God asks. Next.
The discord and apparent evil of the world must in this sphere be admitted, but not accepted as our conquerors. The deepest instinct of humanity seeks always and seeks wisely. Wisdom is the last word of the universal manifestation. Not an eternal mockery and illusion, a secret and finally triumphant good, not an all-creative and invincible evil, an ultimate victory and fulfillment, not the disappointed recoil of the soul from its great adventure.
Thank you, explanation.
Padi Kita.
Padi, madam, please.
Explanation. If all that is manifested in the universe is Brahman, why do we come across discord and evil in the world? Is what we see in the world an eternal mockery without any value and an illusion? Is the evil we face all creative and invincible? Is there no option for the soul than to be disappointed with the world and to withdraw itself from the world? These are all logical questions that may arise in our minds. Minds. Sri Aravind though gives answers to these questions in very clear terms. The deepest instincts of humanity always see wisdom as a final result in universal manifestation, not a persistent illusion, a finally victorious good and not an evil that cannot be won, an ultimate victory and fulfillment of the soul and not a disappointed withdrawal from the world. Therefore, we can presume that the manifestation proceeds to realize the above human ideals as its final goal. Thank you, sir. to realize the above human ideals as its final goal. Thank you sir.
Indha prabanjathila ellame Brahman partho. There is nothing which is not Brahman. Brahman alladadu edhum illai ennu partho. Indha prabanjathil velipad, velipaduvadhi ellame Brahman endral, enna karanathirkaaha nam indha prab, indha olahil thimey kandginrom oru discard, discard endral? Or muranbadhal? Or pinakkhu idhay kandginrom, indha keelvi eezikindradu. Appriyendral, indha olakathil nam kandvadhi ellame vande oru eternal mockery, mockery endral, ollakeli kuriyavishayengal. Adhil endhavaidumana oru unmai thanmeyam kadiyadu. Eternal mockery. Eli kuriyav, nahippe kuriyavishayebal, nahippe karamana vishayengal. This is the eternal mockery. An illusion endral mayathothrungal. Avar, avar eduttukollalama? Enginra keelvi eezikindradu. Adhe pola, nam indha prabanjathil edhirkollum indha thimey is evil. Adhu vande adhu nam wellavee mudiyada adhu migum thiremmavayindada? Adhu nam wellavee mudiyada enginra keelviyam eezikindradu. Adhe pola, indha karanathinaal manidhanode aanma indha olakathim edhu thripthi, adhirtthi uttru. Indha olakathil irundhey thannai vilakkikolluvadu sariya adhu than oru sariyana thirva enginra keelviyam eezikindradu. Itthai keelvihalai Bhavan keelviyaha eelpinai eelpavillai Bhavan veervaidumaha kurukindrar, adharkku oru vasudhiporukkunam engi keelviyaha eelpikollukindrom. Bhavan veervaidumaha kurukindrar. Bhavan ennakurukindrar? Bhavan vande idharodey neermarayanavishayengalai kurithu, andhda edhirmarayanavishayengal allai ennu kurukindrar. Nam purindhu kolluvadhirkadharaka, itthai oru edhirmarayanav keelvihalai eelpikollukindrom. Unmayleeyeh indha olaham inbadu oru keli kuriyav oru vishayama, poiymaya thimey enbadu oru wellamudiyadu oru amshamaha irikkindradha indha olakathil. Manidhanode aanma indha olakath, olahanadavadikkalilirundu adhirtthi uttru vilakkikolluvadu than oru sariyana oru thirva maridhanode aanma arkkut. Enginra keelviyallam nam keetukondal namakkuyenna oru badil kedeckindradu endral? Engi Bhavan ennakurukindrar endral? Indha keelvihalakallam badilalikkum mannamaha Bhavan, selavishayengalai engu urudhipaduttekindrar. Enna urudhipaduttekindrar Bhavan? Manidhanodey deepest instinct, instinct endral, manidhanodey ularundhirkum oru aaval, oru ulrunarvu. Edhu, edhin adukindradu endral, adhu epurudeme indha nyanathitaan adukindradu. Iridyaan oru vishayathla adhu vande it wants to attain the wisdom. Idha vande nam parkindrom, scientific discoveries ellam vande thodrandhunadibettukondi irikkindran. Iridya oru unmay adimmarikkum thodrandhun raichigal nadibettukondi irikkindran. Idhi ellafieldalai pakarom. Persistent search after truth enbadhe nam ellaa, ellafieldsi nam parkindrom. Akiala Bhavaning ennakurukindrar? Wisdomthi vande nyanathitaan manidhanukulam adukindradu. Adhu vande oru mayathoth, mayathothratthai adhu naaduvadhi illai. Epurudeme oru maya valakkul sikkirupadhi adhu virumbuvadhi illai. Adhu nyanathitaan oru irudhimudivaha adhu naadukindradu. This is number one. Irandaavudhi manidhanukulam edhin adukindradu endral? Oru nanmai vande tharekkavendam enbadhe than adhu naadukindradu. Nanmai than epurudeme naladu tharekkavendam. Victorious good. Adhe pola oru wellavee mudiyadu oru thimey adhu naaduvadhi illai. Moondraavudhi manidhanode aanma vande oru purnathvaththi, purnathvaththiim oru modu niraviyim adayavendam, etta vendam. Adhu, adhitan naadukindradu. Adhu obor manidhanum, manidhanakkullum irkakodiya oru vekkayaha irikkindradu. Idhay than aramathilaiyeh Bhavan first chapterliyeh Bhavan kooriurundhar. Human aspiration. The human aspiration irikkindra oru karanathirkaathan namay eblavishayengalai, indha aanmai vishayengalai parkindrom, danvika putthangalai naa padikindrom. Alavishayengalai keetkenni eezikindrom. Enna karanamendha namulirkakodiyandha aanma vande oru irudhyaha oru vettreyithaan, vettreyim oru modu niraviyim adayavirubukindradu. Adhu vande indha olakathinodey nadevadikkalil oru adhirtthi uttru velikikollavirumbuvadhi illai. Akiala Bhavaning irudhyaha ennakurukindrar endral? Indha olakath, olaham indha olakathil nodiya Brahmaninode velipadu, manifestation of the divine. The Brahman, Brahmandhan velipadikindran indha olakathila. Edharkaha indha velipadu nigandunduladu endral? Itthaiya manidhanukulathinodey lachchayengalai in niraveetrum oru irudhi elakaha kondu niraveethuvadhakaa than Brahmaninodey andhda velipadu indha olakathil nadiberrikindradu oru yeh the olaham inbadu oru poiyana vishayam kadiyadu ennu Bhavan kurukindrar. Liya? Adhu than, than karanam. Bhavan koorakoodi indha, indha sentence nodiya, indha paragraph nodiya karanam adharid maya karuthu adhu than. Oru pair unmai nokhitan naa payanathikondirikkindrom. Idhi adharkaha than indha velipadu, Brahmaninode velipadu engin nadibettuladu enginra karuthai engi Bhavan kuripputtula. Adhutthu andhda Bhavan alithulavilakkam, enandhal engi Bhavan andhda advaita karuthukkalai kurukindrar. Ah, adhu kuritha Bhavaninodey vellakkaththi nam parthpom. Enandhal indha karuththala meendam meendam life divine la varikindradu. Andhda mayavadik advaitam vande almost ellachapterli Bhavan adhanodey evaaraadu unmay alla enbadhi ah, vayipu kedeckumbodallam, andhda adhanodey unmayattritthanmeyi Bhavan meendam meendam suttikattukindrar. So adhu enna enbadhi Bhavaninodey eertukkalinbolumaavi nam kandariyom. Let us on yoga la irikkindradu adhu nam padipo. Mayavada and Shankara's Philosophy. Yes, padig sir please.
Sri Arbindo's view on mayavada and advaita. Source, Letters on Yoga, Part Two, Page 391 and 440. Mayavada and Shankara's Philosophy. I do not agree with the view that the world is an illusion, mitya. The Brahman is here as well as in the Supra Kastings of the world. The thing to be overcome is the ignorance, which makes us blind and prevents us from realizing Brahman in the world as well as beyond it and the true nature of existence. One used to think that Shankara's philosophy was this, that the supreme reality is a spaceless and timeless absolute para Brahman, which is beyond all feature and quality, beyond all action or creation, and that the world is a creation of maya, not absolutely unreal, but real only in time and while one lives in that. Once we get into your knowledge of the reality, we perceive that maya and world and all in it are no abiding or true existence. It is, if not non-existence, like false jagat mitya. It is a mistake of the consciousness. It is, and it is doubt. If that is Shankara's philosophy, it is to me unacceptable and incredible. However brilliantly ingenious it may be, and however boldly and insisive reasonable. It does not satisfy my reason and I do not agree with my experience. The Shankara knowledge is only one side of the truth. It is the knowledge of the Supreme as realized by the spiritual mind through the static silence of the pure existence. It was because he went by this side only that Shankara was unable to accept or explain the origin of the universe except as illusion, the creation of maya. Unless one realizes the Supreme on the dynamic as well as the static side, one cannot experience the true origin of things and the equal reality of the active Brahman.
Thank you sir. First, this explain pannidra. Indha vellakkam, indha vellakkam vande Bhavanodey yeli angalathil than irikkindra. Idha paditharai namakka nadraaha purukindradu. Romba oru letters on yoga vande anivarum padikkevendiyaputthangal, enna romba simple Englisha thanarokkum. Life divine maduryo matra, ah, parakkukal mariyav oru kadumiyana angalathil drukadu, yelimiyana oru nadeyamri angalathil than, preyavandhan kana padikindradu. That's the Shankaravunodey andhda ah, mayavada kootpadigalai Bhavan, adhu markindrar. Ennakurukindrar? Andhda, adhu vande unmainodey oru pagathithaan kattikindradu oru yam mozhumeyi, unmainodey oru mozhumeyadu kattuvadhi illai. Indha olaham inbadu oru maye enrabu enbadhi eethu kollamudiyadu. Enandhal Brahman inbadu, kingu mirikkindran? Idhi kadandhanelailim, ellam kadandhanelailim mirikkindradu. Akiala, indha edhinam vettreykollavendum, may oru yeh, vendum endral, namodiyariyamay? The Brahman indha prabanjathil, inodey bra, indha prabanjam inbadu, indha Brahmaninode velipadu enbadu kuritha namodiyayariyamayi, adhitan nam wellavettamithavira. The prabanjaththi alla, prabanjam inbadu unmai. Enandhal indhaariyamay than namal indha unmay aarindukollu, aarindukolluvadhrirkka namakkut thadayaha irikkindradu. Enandral, our Shankaranodey Thathva kootpattiin padhi andhda Brahman inbadu kaalam, kaalam, idam enbadhi kadandhanirkum oru arudhipurulaha than irikkindradu. Enandhal our anthaiyanaanubhotthi oru eettinar. Our andhda static side, sayalattru nelai irkakodiyandhda Brahmaninodey andhda nelai, andhda anubhotthi maathiram our eettinar. Akial than ouripuruthavarekku, undhda prabanjam inbadu oru mayayaha our kandar. Ananal Bhavaning ennakurukindrar endral? Indha ourukal kandha andhda unmai enna prabanjam inbadu nam irkum marikkum, kaathirtkum, idathirtkum, utpatthi nelailirkum, marikkum adhu unmayaha thonrum, ananal nam idhi kadandhanelikkusendruvittal, idhi poiyaha namakkut thondam enbadu than ourukalodey vada. Ananal Bhavaning ennakurukindrar? Idhi naan eethu, naam, naam, ennaladu, enna eethu kollamudiyavillai? Enna than adhu migasirappana morailum migum ajaana oru dargaridiana morailum vilakkvaadu aarivikappattalam kodha, thirivikappattalam kodha ennal, adhu eethu kollamudiyavadillai, enanall ennoodya oru arivu, ennoodya arivu adhi mudaril eethu kollva markindradu. Irandaavudhi ennoodya anubom, adhu than mukya. Bhavan koorakoodiyandhda vaarthila our vande verum meembokha sulal. He does not agree with my experience abdingradu. Virkereppatta anubom veervaidumaha irikkindradu. Adhanadipadaila parthomindina, the all is Brahman. Adhitan avandha, adhitan our anubomaha kandginradu. Akiala Shankara's knowledge is only one side of the truth ennu Bhavan kuripadikindradu. Adhu vande oruvaayana oru anubhava riddiyana adipadayil, the spiritual mind ennu Bhavan kuripaduvadu over mind enradam kurikindromi, andhda nelail kandarintha oru ah, sayalattru nelailirkum andhda Brahmaninodey iruppay than oural anubomaha kandarakal. Ananal sayalvadam nelailirkum andhda kittham anubomum unmai. Akiala andhda anubhotthi oru adayavillai, irandhimay oru seyarathan oruvar gavathil kollavendum ennu Bhavan engi kuripadikindradu. Adhutthu advaita kuritha kulakaththi parthpom.
Sir, oru impression indha connectionla sollamasir?
Yes sir please.
Adavudhi Bhavan vande oru budhiradavishithla sonnarlai, annamari, our nirvana attainpannaparamooda our vande effectivea sayalpatta, adhulaiyeh andhda teery adibettukorugabbin sonnarlai. Adhemari Shankara vishithla kodha our static side motthu naa our retinist panna kodha, ourai dynamicam narundhukarakka, prashanmadham vande establish panna, prashakradikuljeyam, ammupulanga, naalu direction matthalas, adhalam dynamic side abdingar baithan.
Idhay than, idhay than Sri Arbindha vande soldhar, ouru deaforesumsal oru onadu la.
God laughed at Shankara's twice in oru. When, ah, some, I am not able to exactly recall, when he cried when his mother passed away or when he once on one side he, he told that the world is maya, and other side he went about establishing ah, mats all over India, appriy, andhda samaythalai, God laughed twice. Abdingal, ouru deaforesam vande Bhavan nahichivaha koorva. Nige sonnakaruthu than vardhu, enge exactan enge recall pannamudiyala? Ah, Bhav, ah, idhu vande ourukal, ourodey sayalpattai, sayalpade ourodey kootpattukum moranaa irikkindradu. Liya? Adhu than artom. On one side you are, on one side you are telling that everything is maya. And the other side you go about establishing so many establishments. In the olakathila, indha karuthi than Bhavanam kurivulla, naa exactan avungalakathu varanakootpandra. Nige soru than unmai, adha. Rangarajan sir, solung sir.
Ah, traisn sonnarae doctor sir.
Ah, adha enge, exactan recall pannamudiyala, I will
First vande andhda idhtha vaaxam idam sarvam yekkinjathin solumbodhu ah, iraivan indha olakathil ellavatthum irikkirannu, Bhavan naripindra sonnara. Our vande, avu mailadayaha porti kondi irkirana, apin sonnara. Andhda, andhda, andhda experimentara. Irandaavudhi vande amma avukor pranik pannikudustindara.
Ah, yes.
Namadri onnoda, ee makriyayi pannuvainna. So andhda samaythal vande, andhda ee makriyayi epo sanyasinjantala, our, epri eh, idhalam pannalam abhinkirukkum, iraivan thithaan. Munaadu vande inaction vande sulli throughout India ponna bodhu, appu iraivan vande Bhavan teedala sulli irukkara. Naane orunusha ennada velai seyala, naa indha olaham sambithu poyadumna. So adha poi ivar tapaadu pannanju, munaadu, Bhavan sinthanju, traisn.
Ah, ah, Bhavanode, Bhavan oru, 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 naa oru humorousa kootpannirparu idhpati.
Ah, sir.
Oru deaforesumsal varun enikrana, humorousa varun enikrana, adhu. Adhu chola Adha, naa padikran, nige sonnadu correct, naa I will read, I can, I can locate it. Aforesam three, aforesam three zero seven, alavardhu, enna vardhu abdingina? Three times God laughed at Shankara. First, when he returned to burn the corpse of his mother. Again, when he commented on the Isha Open Ashad. And the third time, when he stormed about India preaching inaction. He romba, nige sonnadu karuthu than, engi, adhadu exact words naa padikranada. Shogun sir sonnadu romba apta sonnara. Adhitan Bhavanam kurivulla.
Another interesting anecdote kodha is, sir, solalapaste.
Ah, solung sir please.
Oru Bhavanindamadi la, shagaracharya patthi la solin, solin kara. Oru senior saadak vande kalkathaale vande, vande avu shringi kalkathaaku pohara, avu pohumbodhu angavande indha madri, andhda, indha shangaracharya, andhda shringeri madam saravadeedathasendavaar interpessuar. Abing potona ivu korai, VP, hona seri, ivar vande enna Bhavan patthi pesapora. Avin jellitu poi, angupoi, vaakya kalan pohumbodhu, he was simply struck with wonder. Enna, our solumbodhu esolrara, our, andhda shringeri madam shagaracharya naanga sinnavaesal allai irkumbodhu, bandha, India vidhalayareyirukka Bhavan odaydhalna, engalakallam sintilatinga arddudu. Naanga Bhavan teedaiyadum bodhu, naa, the Bhavan watcha, abin varra edathalana he Aravinda watcha, abin jellina, nam sulli poyapiununa, ivu korai bramipaa irudhu. Enna than oru shringeri kaangi mattu vande ibrisolrara, abinna? Adhukabram, our vande, he went on praising Sri Arbindho like anything. So, idhu vande oru long back, parimune varsha, parinall varsha, nadi, oru all India magazine la oru saadak vande from Kolkata returned vandhavane, idha ejeerkar sir. I was also struck with wonder, romba arthpudamaa arddudu. Epo, indha varshaun, namavunna.
Thank you sir. Thank you sir.
The truth is one, the higher level la bhedam kadiyadu. Avunga than unmai. Kehi level la than bhedam. Ah, andhda advaitam patthi andhda karuthim padichilla, adhodam muddichiklanam.
Padig sir please.
Advaita, people are apt to speak of the advaita as if it were identical with mayavada monism just as they speak of vedanta, as if it were identical with advaita only. That is not the case. There are several forms of Indian philosophy which base themselves upon the one reality, but they admit also the reality of the world, the reality of the many, the reality of the differences of the many, as well as the sameness of the one, bhedha bhedha. This is a realistic, realistic advaita, which actually see as the universal law of existence.